Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard?
Ollie.
Yes.
Odie?
Yes.
Saxor?
Yes.
Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, with that, under the approval of the agenda, there's just a quick name or title change under number eight under personnel. It should say custodial to hire custodial employees for the summer 2022. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. Takes us to approval of the general meeting minutes from April 11th and April 25th. I would entertain a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our community inputs section. And tonight, we would like to welcome Mr. John Semchenko from Brandon Wellness to share some information with us.
Board, thanks for allowing us to be here. Dr. Larson, thanks for the invite. My name is John, and representing Brandon Wellness, along with me are Shanna Howe, who's a member of our advisory team, and Mike Burks, who's a member of our board of directors. And I just want to give you a little history on Brandon Wellness. About almost two years ago, we started asking the question, and by "we," myself and a couple of members of our board, like, what would a group of well-intentioned Brandon citizens, what could we do if we just united and said, hey, we want to do this for our community? What would that look like? And after a number of conversations, the thing that kept coming up was a community center, a wellness center. That kept coming up over and over and over. And over the last two years, really, everybody we've talked to is in favor of that. They think that'd be a really, a real asset for our community. And so we began conversations, and in January of this year, of 2022, we formed a nonprofit. We're registered with the state of South Dakota, and the federal government, that final approval is still just in process. It takes months for the IRS to give their appeal. But really, the visions come into focus in terms of what we want to do. And we've created a board, as I mentioned. We also have an advisory team that's been working with us. And just to kind of give you an idea of some of the people that we've been talking with, I want to just read to you the people on our board. Amanda Barton, Becky McCabe, Chris, Sherri Burks, Mike Burks, myself, Aaron Hanson, and Tim Jorgensen are members of the board. And then our advisory team, in no particular order, is Amanda Starzil, Josh Schneller, Josh Coob, Dave and Yocum, Dave Jones, Claire Toth, Cindy Green, Ellie Saxor, Jeff Thue, Noah Shepard, Cindy Wills, Jason Melcher, Luke Hartman, Karen Copel, April Peterson, T.J. Barman, Dan Dykhouse, Todd Stone, Gretchen Jefferson, Barb Fish, Jim Heinitz, Rachel Nyman, Garrett Callahan, Lee Zerbal, and Tammy Janzma. And those folks, you know, serve our community in different ways, in different places, but really have been a part, over the last three months, of really going, okay, what does this look like? How do we approach this? And we've had a lot of conversations, and within the last couple of weeks, we really determined, hey, one of the community stakeholders that we really need to engage is our school district. Because the school district is, you know, the number one, really, institution and covers, you know, the most rooftops in our community. And so as we've been doing some of the behind-the-scenes work, we just wanted to kind of formally present this to you. And we're not really seeking anything from the school district this time, because we're still in that exploratory phase. We don't really even know what all the needs are. And we've got an idea of who those stakeholders are, but we really feel a wellness center would match up well with the pillars that the school district's strategic plan has put forth of fiscal responsibility. We've noticed that, you know, not everything can the school board include when it comes to facilities. There's just some limitations with the rise in costs. There are certain elements and components of an education that are not all. We can't have everything. And I know you guys have had to make a lot of hard decisions in that. And so as a nonprofit and members of this community, we really want to come alongside of the school district and say, hey, here's some things that we can help, create a little bit of space when it comes to facility use. And then, and of course, one of your pillars also is community engagement. And we feel strongly that we all have a stake in our education of our children. And you guys obviously live that day in and day out. You breathe that. And as citizens of this community and this area, we really want to step up and do what we can to help. And so I've had some brief conversations with Dr. Larson and talked to a couple of other staff members within the school district and just kind of said, hey, maybe the next step would be to talk with the board and just let everybody know where we're at and where we're coming from. So that's kind of, that's kind of basically the long and the short of it for us. And we'll stay in touch and we'll keep talking. Do you guys have any questions for myself or that I can maybe take back or can answer now?
They're all looking at me.
Well, I wouldn't.
John, I appreciate you coming in and just starting the conversation. There's a lot more to unfold. I know that, still exploring and learning a lot. I think the direct parallel that I think it can draw is as much as we want to do, as much as we can within the community of Brandon and Valley, is also what the Brandon Wellness is wanting to do. There's a lot that maybe Sioux Falls offers that we want to be able to offer here in Brandon to support not only the students, but also their parents of all ages, but also the seniors, and just bring everybody together. So I know, like you stated, as a school, we can't do it all. And after they leave the school building, where else can they go? What else can we do as a community together? So I know that's what has been a lot of the conversation. So I appreciate you starting the conversation, not just with us, but with a lot of other groups. So excited to see where this can go, to see where there can be collaboration and partnership. And again, thanks for coming in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have, financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard?
Okay. Excuse me. I'll entertain any questions from the board. I didn't have anything noted on the listing of bills and claims. There was a total of 341, was it? 472,000 of bills and invoices for your review. $4,100 in advance payments claims, $88,691 of pay vouchers, and $153,000 of food service bills.
Any questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard?
Okay. Cash report for the month of April showed $13.8 million coming into the month, $3.1 million of receipts, and just over $4 million expenditures. Left $12,975,000 of actual cash at the end of April. $6.6 million was in the general fund, $4.7 million in the capital outlay fund, $844,000 in the special education fund, $121,000 in the bond redemption fund, $58,657 in the enterprise fund, and $610,000 in the capital projects fund. The $3.1 million is itemized on the next two pages. Following that is an investment report of $1,285,000. After that is the payroll and benefits summary for the month of April. $2,291,000 of total payroll, $1,400,000 of related deductions and benefits. And actually, on the financial reports, the first two pages of the revenue report, revenues percentage-wise are going to show a little down from last year, the numbers that are in there. It's pretty much can be summarized that COVID reimbursements are behind schedule. It just takes a lot of time to amend these budgets and get them on the appropriate wavelength with everything that we're doing. It just, it takes a lot of time to turn that over. So the revenue is fine. It's just delayed by the COVID payments. Expenditures, we're 83% of the fiscal year completed. The general fund is right at that level, 83.1% versus 81.65% last year, which is up at the same time 1.5%, which would put us right at 100%, 99.5% or so at the end of the fiscal year. Capital outlay fund is 87.8% expended. Special education fund is 87% expended. Bond redemption fund is 94% expended. Food service fund shows accrued profit of $1.1 million at the end of April versus $750,000 at the same time last year. Capital projects fund, very little change in there, just in FF and E. Close that out in June. And then the trust and agency report, 277,000 of amounts held for others.
Any questions for Mr. Lombard tonight on the financial reports at all? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lombard. General business. First item we have, administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to update you on here this evening. COVID-19 information website maintains our centralized communication hub, as previously stated. We will review and revise our Safe Return to Learn Plan at our second board meeting in May, which will go into effect June 1st, scaling back the respective protocols associated with COVID-19. It is important to note that we reserve the right to pivot if necessary. Budget process overview. So tonight, you'll be hearing the preliminary budget presentation later in this agenda, and then we will be set to have our public budget hearing and potential action on the budget at our July Board of Education meeting, our annual meeting. There is no longer free breakfast or lunch during the summertime, so the summer lunch program will be, will be ending. That will not be provided here this, this school year. It's important to note that our EL summer school program will have lunch provided. We will be utilizing CNS Angel funds. And then it's also relevant to note that, starting back in the fall, there will no longer be free or universal free meals for all children. So it will be necessary for folks to fill out the free and reduced lunch application in order to receive the free meals. We have begun communicating that already, and we'll really ramp that up here over the course of the, of the summer. High school addition schedule. We remain on schedule. I would note that we will begin to see some action here out on the new parking lot area. You'll see some heavy, heavy equipment machinery out there, moving dirt, beginning to prep that, that respective site for a parking lot, and that will begin this week so that we can be completed and ready to utilize that lot in August. Now is a primetime opportunity to remind everyone to stay out of construction zones, stay back and away from the construction areas, and ultimately, stay away and be safe. So that message will be relayed in multiple ways. But you will begin to see action here out on the parking lot area here later this week. We will begin the process on the actual building addition, June 1st, and that's really when construction will begin. That will work throughout the entirety of the year with substantial completion, ultimately final completion in June of 2023. The high school addition priorities, again, general education classrooms, ground floor special education, and science lab classrooms are the priorities of our high school addition as we work to accommodate our growing enrollment here at Brandon Valley High School. We are developing a Brandon Valley High School addition website, centralized communication hub. So all of our communications in terms of traffic flow, bus loop, information about the lot or about the project will be posted to that respective site. So all of our individual patrons have the ability to go to one centralized location and access information about that site. That site has been distributed to our patrons via school messenger. Accreditation will occur in November with a desk audit. It was an absolute pleasure to honor and have all of our staff back for the Brandon Valley Staff Recognition Banquet. Our 28th Annual Banquet returned to in-person, and we honored Dell Hubers as the 2022 Brandon Valley School District Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Dell. State testing is complete. Overall, just want to thank our students. Their effort was outstanding. We really appreciate their, their strong effort and doing the very best that they can. The results will be provided to families here in late May. You'll receive a good news report from the high school at our second meeting in May. Graduation is on May 15th. I believe Principal Schleckaway will provide the board with a few details regarding graduation and expectations for you guys. Our last day for students is May 25th, and May 26th is teacher workshop. Our linked summer reading program will kick off. That's a cooperative effort with Sioux Land Library as well as Pizza Ranch. Ultimately, the Brandon Valley School District promotes and supports the summer reading program as established by Sioux Land Library. 2023, or 2223 academic calendar items to note, and this is more of just restating something that's been said before. Our first day for all grades 1 through 12 is on August 24th. Our kindergarten begins on Friday, August 26th, and our early childhood then begins on that Monday, August 29th. With that, would certainly field any questions you have?
Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything else tonight? Thank you. High school, Mr. Schleckaway.
Thank you. Busy week at the high school this week. We're celebrating the class of 2022. We'll have the academic assembly on Wednesday morning at around 10:20, 10:30-ish. And then we're going to follow that with the class of 2022 barbecue. So we always welcome superintendent and board members of that. That runs from about 11:45 to 1 o'clock. And then the students have to usher back in, and some have to take tests and things like that on Wednesday, Thursday. Your duty starts on Sunday. I'd like you to be in the high school commons around 1:45. I'll meet, I'll meet you, kind of go through your list. If you have a group of students that you obviously want to give a diploma to, because maybe family, friends, and such as that, we'll walk through that process. But you guys are all pretty veterans, so certainly will look a little different this year since we don't have to social distance quite as much. But looking forward to celebrating the class of 2022. Any questions you have for me? Next visit with the good news report, you'll learn a little bit about our internship in Sanford Aspire. So we look forward to sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Moore, anything tonight? Okay. Mr. Paula? All right. Mr. Thorson?
Good evening. I have a teacher here. Kelsey Hoff is here, and she would like to give an oral report on a conference she attended about a month ago. It was the Aspiring Leaders Conference out in the Black Hills. She came to us some time ago and asked, can I apply for this? And she was accepted, one of 30 individuals that were accepted. And we've had other teachers that have attended this conference also. But the day that Kelsey came back, she was so excited about the conference and some of the skills and some of the strategies that she learned. Not only aspiring leaders as a, as a building, maybe principal, but also how it can help them as, as teacher leaders within our building, whether it's a team leader, or PLCs, or a variety of other things. So it, it's a, it's a great opportunity, and I think she just wants to share what a great experience she had and encourage others to apply for that. So with that, Kelsey Hoff.
Thank you, Mr. Thorson. That's exactly, I got to attend the Aspiring School Leaders Retreat, Technology and Education, the Department of Ed. And then Dr. Ryan Young, he's with the Black Hills Specialty Services Cooperation, put this on. And it was, it was really incredible to be able to network. There's just 30, 30 people from all across the state, from large schools to small schools, and they showed us the map of everything, different funding of schools. So it was just really cool to be able to network with people that their frustrations right now look a little bit different than Brandon Valley's and successes. So that was really interesting to kind of be able to just touch base with them. And they provided this, a panel of administrators to be able to shoot questions off with, which is really great. But I think one of the coolest things was situational piece that a professor from the University of South Dakota put us into, kind of like those choose-your-own-stories, choose-your-own-adventure books. You read the page and then turn to this page if this, you choose this or whatever. And so gave us a scenario, and then we chose, and what I thought was like, oh, this is the obvious choice. And then you hear other people's rationale, and you're like, oh, maybe I'm not exactly right on there. Unfortunately, as a group, our teacher resigned, so we did not do a great job in that. But it was a really cool learning experience to go back. He actually has some teacher ones too, so kind of in contact that possibly it could be something to bring to our staff development as well. It just was really great to see, few of these teachers that I were with already have accepted leadership roles. Others haven't even started the educational process in there. So I really would encourage, as administrators, if you have somebody in your building that like, I think they would enjoy this. I think leadership in all different formats, to push them, to, to put their, put their name in the hat, because I learned a ton. Secretary of Ed Tiffany Sanderson is hoping to find some funding to bring us back in a year or two years. They've never been able to have more than just the initial meeting. So she's trying to get it so that maybe we can meet again in that piece. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that made it happen, my principals, my substitutes, transportation department, and everything. So it was a really great experience. I could have stayed out there all week. It was gorgeous. But also, because we, like, all of a sudden, they're like, all right, you guys can grab your lunch and go. And we're like, oh, we're not done learning. So it was really cool. So I just wanted to say thank you, and it was a really great experience that I got to have. So. Questions for me? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Intermediate school, Mr. Skipstead, Mr. Pearson, Mrs. Otime, anything for special ed? Ms. Foster, Mrs. Hoffcamp, Mr. Horst, Mrs. Palmer, Quiet Bunch? Mrs. Nelson, anything tonight? Mr. Henshaw?
Hi, good evening. I'd just like to give a shout out to Andrea Cruz. She was just nominated by a group of her peers and was announced as the Outstanding Dietitian of the Year by the South Dakota State Academy of Dieticians and Nutrition. Again, she does an outstanding job for us throughout the year. She navigates through all the challenges that we've had, supply chain shortages, the labor shortages, does a phenomenal job for us. And on top of that, she is very passionate about what she does, and she takes the initiative to go out there and try to find innovative ways to improve in other ways, like Farm Fresh to Table, the program that we're looking at, the education in the classrooms for students and staff, as well as bringing back the health fare. So again, we just want to congratulate her and show her our appreciation that, hey, she's doing a great job. We're very lucky to have her.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw, and congratulations to her.
Thank you.
Mr. Frecking? Not here. Okay. All right, no board policy, and I know that's a disappointing thing every time I say that there is none. General business. Item number one, Brandon Valley School District, 2022 to 2023 preliminary budget presentation. And again, there will be no action on this tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The proposed FY23 budget is approximately $67.7 million, which includes the entire cost of our 35,000-square-foot Brandon Valley High School addition, which, as previously presented, will be paid for entirely out of capital outlay cash, placing no additional tax burden upon our constituents. Planned and responsible deficits are being utilized in all funds as a strategy to effectively manage fund balances. These planned deficits are important as we work to create learning environments that result in success while providing the very best work environment possible for our staff. All projected fund balances within the FY23 budget remain at or above the 15% fund balance threshold as clearly outlined within our strategic plan. So before turning over the presentation to Mr. Lombard, I'd like to publicly thank our administration, and specifically the business office, including Paul Lombard, Jim Schubert, Mary Miller, and Stacy Bruce, for all their diligent work in the development of the FY23 budget. Paul's team and their countless hours of work directly result in an accurate, aggressive, and fiscally responsible budget for the Brandon Valley School District. So with that, Mr. Lombard?
Thank you. As Superintendent said, it's $67,727,000 total budget. On the first slide there, $37.3 million of expenditures in the general fund, $14.5 million in the capital outlay fund, $8.7 million in the special ed fund, $3,135,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $3,965,000 in the child nutrition fund. I had a couple notes on the expenditure. We're still dealing with quite a large amount of COVID money, ESER funds, as they call them, in this budget. I think in the general fund, we'll be down about $500,000, and we'll be down considerably in the capital outlay fund too. But we're still spending a lot of ESER monies throughout the thing. Also, as Jared mentioned, that there's deficit spending in all the funds, and we use that as a revenue avenue to fund our current expenditures and also to reduce our, any excess monies that we have, excess cash that we have on hand. This is a, like I said, it's a revenue option to utilize for us. And I think the tough thing about it is to manage that then. Whenever you have a structural deficit, and it becomes a real balancing act to try to maintain that, because it is a structural deficit. But we've done a good job of, or you guys have worked with us and, and done a good job of getting through those structural deficits. And it's, it's a thing that we should do. People don't pay taxes. For me, I always say, for me to put it in First National Bank, they want services in all, all areas of government. They want services and, and things done. And I would submit to you, it was mentioned earlier, that the school can't do it all. Most of that $67 million there, we do most of it. In that column right there, 60, almost $68 million. That's up from $55 million last year, which is a 16.7% total increase in expenditures. A large portion of that is due to what, also what Jared said, the pain of the high school addition out of cash in the capital outlay fund of $9.3 million. Otherwise, up about another 10% from that. Moving on to the second chart is the general fund budget, the state aid formula. I always like to try to take you guys through this. This is, the formula is driven for our funding every year. And it's a formula that, as far as the state's concerned, is, is driven by teacher salaries and benefits. But as you will see, it's, it's, it's kind of disguised. It's a per-student enrollment, enrollment-driven formula. We have 5,000, 5,050 students projected for next year. You divide that by the number of teachers, 15-to-1 ratio that the state says that we should have at Brandon Valley. Gives us 336 teachers, plus a quarter for English limited proficiency teachers. 337 total teachers, they say we should have. This is the target salary that the state has set, $55,756, plus 29% for benefits, $16,000. Total is 71.9. Times the 337 teachers there gives us a total need of $24,231,000. And then we have an overhead calculation of another $9.4 million. That's 38, almost 39% of the total need. $24 million, and then we take, plus the $9.3 million, gives us $33,628,000 of total need. Take away the local effort that the state says the mill levy for, and then our other revenue equalization. That drops us down to our state aid of $21.8 million. Now, when I said that it's an enrollment-driven formula, when you crank anything out of this, this calculation here, all you do is just change one more kid, 5,051, and that increases the total need in the state aid by $6,600. Two kids, $13,200. So it's a kind of a wolf in sheep's clothes as, as far as what it's driven by. But it's all driven by kids. Any questions on that?
Paul, what is our, like, so the state says that at 15-to-1, where are we at with that? Are we about 15-to-1, 16-to-1, 14-to-1? What's our teacher rate?
We're a little higher than that. We would be a little higher than that. Therefore, we're able to have our teacher salary higher than that. You know, it's... we're able to have our teacher salary higher than that. You know, it's, that again is kind of a, I'm not going to say bogus figure, but I, you know, they just add up all the teachers, and you have all the special teachers and stuff that don't get counted and whatnot. So I would say overall, it's probably an 18 to 1 average at Brandon Valley, which allows us to pay it more.
True.
The next slide is the breakdown of the general fund budget. Instructional budget is 63% of the total budget. Support services, 34%. Activities is 2.5%. Early retirement is just under 1% of the total budget. Enrollment projections for next year, 5,050 kids total that we're projecting. You can see that down at the bottom of the chart. Last year, it was 48, 67. That's up 183. I rounded it up to 185. Total student growth next year of the high school is plus 26. Middle school is plus 7, and the elementary is plus 150, is what we have projected. Jared tells me our kindergarten class is a little bit slow right now. They're about 35 or so under our projection, but a ways to go. And I think I'm pretty confident we'll meet our enrollment Which is good, based on what I said before, that you need the 50/50 to drive your entire budget. Next slide is the general fund expenditures compared to last year. You can see the difference of where they went up. In the instructional area, it went up $1.8 million. Support services, $670,000. Early retirement, just $3,500. It's pretty constant. And then the co-curricular was up 33%. A total of 7.2% increase in the general fund, or $2.5 million. Where that $2.5 million is generated is roughly summed up in the bottom half of that chart. $1.5 million was in salaries, $525,000 in benefits. We had a reduction in our ESER funds utilization of $500,000. We had $900,000 of additional staff. We had some savings of retired teachers of $100,000, and then basically other stuff was $160,000 for the $2.5 million total. That's a rough estimate where that $2.5 million increase comes from. Questions on that? Next slide is just a number of certified employees that we have in the district throughout the years. Next year, we'll project 321 with the 5,050 kids. The next slide is the per pupil allocations and the percentage increases. You can see this year, 22, 23, we're getting a 6% increase in our state aid. And we really should take a second to note that the state of South Dakota was only required by law to give schools a 3% increase. This was a double that increase that was offered to us by the governor. So we're very appreciative, I'm very appreciative of that increase, and able to do that with just a lot of extra revenue coming into the state of South Dakota. But remember, we're quick to complain about when they don't do something. So let's please note when they do do something up and above that we note it. The per pupil allocations, you can see those going up every year. This year, our next year's budget will be $6,600 per pupil allocation approximately. I think this year was $6,200. So up about $400 a kid. Okay. The next slide is a chart that we go over every year. Large schools, per student expenditures for each school. You can see Brandon Valley is the lowest spending school district in this, in those large school categories by quite a bit. We're $1,000 under the ESD per pupil average, and about $2,000 under the state average in per pupil expenditures. Yet still remain the highest paying district teacher salary-wise in the state. Next slide is, talks about the general fund, fund balance. The first half of that shows the actual dollar amount. Obviously, that's increasing because the budget's increasing each year, so that dollar amount is going up each year. The second slide is more pertinent, that it's a percentage, percentage of the expenditures, and that's maintained, been pretty close to around 20%. If you flatten that curve out there, and at the end of 22, 23, we're projecting to have right at 20%. So that's that balancing act of the, of the fund balance that we try to maintain. And as you can tell, gone up, we've gone down. But if you flatten that line out, it's, it's going to remain around the 20%. So that's, I'm very pleased with that. General fund revenue, $36.6 million, and where it comes from. Biggest thing I want to note here, local taxes in Brandon Valley, because our enrollment is growing so drastically. Local taxes only provide 30% of our total expenses in the general fund. State picks up 63% of our total revenue. So those two combined are, what, 90, 93% of our revenue state and local sources. When I started, that was closer to 50/50. Of course, I've been here a long time. I just figured out this is number 33 that I've done in my career. Other revenues history. Now, this has become more of a moot point with the equalization of other revenues taking place within the formula. But it still does have an effect on Brandon Valley in the fact that we are the recipient of a lot of other revenues. So it's kind of a, once again, a balancing act, a roller coaster thing. You can see the grocery receipts has been pretty steady at about $750,000. That's, that doesn't affect as much where we get. This becomes very volatile, the bank franchise tax. You can see the huge spikes, and it drops down then. So when and if that spikes or drops, that'll have an effect on your, your next year's revenues. It's a balancing act with the equalization, but those ebb and flows of that do have an effect. And the county apportionment is a lot smaller number, a little bit of variation there, but it's total-wise, it's a very small number, 140 to 160,000. Capital fund, $14.5 million total. The main part of it, the facility improvements, $9.9 million total of that $9.9 million. $9.3 is budgeted for the new addition to the high school. About $400,000 of that will already been paid in this year's budget. So the total project is about $9.7 million. That is really, really behooves you as a board of education to be able to pay cash for that. It's $10 million bucks, no debt. That's, doesn't happen at very many other schools. Technology purchases in our range of a million bucks every year, 1.2 million, I point out. And then busing, transportation, $482,000, and debt service, $516,000. Very low percentage of debt service in our capital fund, which I'll talk about in the next slide. We just don't have much debt in the capital fund, just a little bit on the intermediate school, half a million dollars every year. We have a $5 million balance, paid off in 2033. What this is enabling you as a board of education to have, is to have options, have the ability to pay for another major building projects out of capital certificates, which basically is saying, same taxes that you're drawing right now. So no tax increase. That's something I'm very, very proud of. And I'll show, in the special education, but I guess I'll wait a little bit that bond redemption comes up. Special ed budget is $8.7 million for 22, 23. Pretty significant increase from 21, 22 of $7,585,000. $1.1 million increase, 15% in, percentage-wise, 15%. Revenue on the special education fund, $8.4 million total revenue, 39% is state-funded, 49% local. 39% comes from the state, 49% local, and 12% from the federal. I always look for that federal to go up. But I tell you, folks, 33 times I've done this, it has been so close to 12% all 33 times, that it's weird. Just doesn't go up. I don't know the revenue item for the federal funding for 22, 23 yet. That allocation has not been put out, so that's an estimate. So some of my revenue, $1 million estimate. This is subject to change. I did want to, I didn't mention it at the beginning, but the food service fund, we have no guidance on that right now. It's all up in the air. We don't even know how much to charge for our meals this year. So it's, that's way behind. I just tried to put together as best I could some numbers. It'll be deficit, we do know that, which we need it to be anyhow. But we do not know, what do they call them, PLEs or something? We do not know how much we're supposed to charge the kids or anything right now. That guidance has not come out. So that, I don't have a lot of slides or detail on the food service budget, just put together totals in there. Next slide is the bond redemption fund. $3,135,000 a total debt service payments in 22, 23. $408,000 on the intermediate school. There's just over $4 million total outstanding at the end of '23. $937,000 on the Inspiration Elementary, just under $15 million will be outstanding on that, that school. If you want to look at it like somebody might look at their house, we built that elementary school last year, and I would bet all of this year's salary, my salary, that you couldn't do that for $21 million today. You did it for $15 million, under $15 million. That's, comes due in 2039. And then here's Fred Assam in the high school activities center. $1.8 million we pay each year, just under $8 million total outstanding. That'll be paid off in '27. So that's another avenue that, that's four years from now. But you'll have the capital certificate avenue, plus you'll have this avenue to pay for additional facilities with little or no tax increases. You are, guys are set up very, very well with debt service. Very well. Property valuations, they're kind of like food service this year. I don't have a lot of guidance on where they're at. They've had some staff turnover. It's complicated that a little bit also. So what I have here is just total estimates on my part. I got it going up 8%. I think that's rather conservative. But I don't know for sure. I have it going up $202 million to $2.7 billion from $2.2 billion right now. That should be coming out in the next three weeks, I would say, that I'll know the total valuations. So I'll be able to finish that up. The next slide is just a chart that shows the, back, yeah, there we go, shows the increases each year of the valuations. $500 million the year I started, $2.7 billion today. Had a nice percentage increase throughout all those years. The last slide is a mill levy slide. The first three levies there are set by the state of South Dakota, the general fund ag levy, owner occupied levy, and the commercial levy are all set by the state of South Dakota. The only way to change that is through an opt-out. The capital levy is set by you as a board of education. We're basically at the maximum that we can be there. Special education fund is a levy that's also set by the state of South Dakota. And the bond redemption fund is a levy that you sent, just you levy enough to pay off, pay the bonds each year. So the total levy and ag looks to be remaining about the same, little drop in owner occupied, and a little drop in commercial levy. A lot of that will have to do with valuation. So how they increased or decreased, and I don't think there'll be too many decreases. Any questions the board has?
Paul, thanks for all the work and everything you just gave. I know we've talked about it before, but you just want to give a quick significance to our educational funds per pupil. I mean, we stand out. It's lower, but above the rest, and why that is.
Be, generally, I like to say there's two or three factors there. First factor is we do not have an opt-out. No general fund opt-out in the Brandon Valley School District. Most of those other schools in that chart, I say most, would have an opt-out, a general fund opt-out. Second thing that's very instrumental in our per pupil expenditures, Brandon Valley receives little or no federal funding. Title I funding, we, we don't even, we can't even pay for two teachers out of our title I funding. Some of those schools are getting a million bucks, and, and they're smaller than us, and they're getting a million bucks in title I funding. But that's just based on our socioeconomic conditions here at Brandon Valley. It's just part of the game. Those are the two main reasons for differences in, in funding. Another, the last one would be, you know, we utilize revenue, or as a revenue line item, we transfer from the capital fund. $900,000 a year. This year, we've dropped it to $800,000. And the variance between the school district can be pretty great in that. You know, one might be transferring $2 million, and one might be transferring nothing. So that's another difference. Those are the three main differences.
So it'd be fair to say, with the academic excellence that we achieve, and as well as all the other activities, as well as Brandon does with such a large school district, to do all that with such low funds per pupil cost, we do it very responsibly.
Yep.
As well as how we pay our staff.
The dollars that are entrusted to us are, I would say, it's very evident that they're wisely spent.
Thank you.
You are incredibly efficient.
Any other questions?
Paul, I got one here. Under general funds, I see the state is contributing about 63% rate of...
Total revenue?
Revenue.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Why in special ed do they only give, what is it here, 39% or something like that?
29% from the state, I think it was.
39?
Or 39, was it?
Yeah. What's the formula for that?
It's a, it's just a different formula, and I'll tell you, it's an administrative question that's been asked for my 33 years here. It's just always asked that there needs to be more activity in the special ed fund by the, not only the state government, but the federal government. It just, it's not enough, folks, because special ed is a, is a different creature. Yeah, and it's, those expenditures can, can grow astronomically. And a lot of that burden falls on the local taxpayers now to, to fund that. We've been fortunate here at Brandon Valley. We've maintained a, a pretty status quo number of children. And I mean, it's going up because our enrollment's going up, but percentage-wise, we maintain a pretty status quo number, level number, so we've been able to plan for it. But I don't have an answer for you why. It's something that we've battled throughout the years, and will continue to battle, I'm sure. And almost more importantly is the federal number that way back when, that federal number is, is, I mean, it's in, it's in the, not constitution, but in the bylaws or whatever, that that should be 40%. But we, we just operate on how much we got, you know, how much money we have, and then press on. So I don't have a good answer. That's the only answer I have. Anything else? Thank you. I think you should be very proud of this budget. I think it's really, really good. You took care of your teachers very, very well this year, and all your staff by hiring a lot of new staff, $900,000 worth, plus a significant percentage increase for all of them. It's a good year. Thank you.
I just, a comment, I just, again, thank you. The link and the bridge to thanking our staff because of all that they do do with sometimes our limited resource. That is our stretch, that oftentimes we're able to fill in. They are able, we have, I know so many families, and even to what John spoke to, that moved to Brandon Valley, that choose Brandon Valley because of the schools. They choose Brandon Valley because of our special ed program. So the services and the teaching and the level that our teachers provide are why people choose here. And oftentimes, we have the lesser budget, we have limited resources, but that doesn't... stop us from delivering the top-notch education and activities in the programs. That's because of everything that you guys pour into our students day in and day out. So that is why it is because of all that you do. So that is why we try to pay what we do every year and pour into you what we can. So thank you.
Yeah, you guys are investing eighty-six percent of your total general fund budget in the salaries and benefits. There's not much left over, and that's, when you're in a business such as ours, that's driven by that person standing in front of the room, that's a very good thing to do. There's a reason why we have the best test scores and stuff, because we have the best people standing in front of the room, and we have the, the best salaries for those people standing in front of the room.
Best parents, too. In some cases.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lumber and Superintendent Larson for the budget presentation tonight. All right, with that, I would enter, on the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve items two through twenty, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through nine, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Items ten through fourteen are for information only. Under communication, there are some building permit applications for you to look at if you would choose to. Board of Education, there are three thank you notes there from various people thanking us for the banquet and years of service recognition. That takes us to our board reports, formal reports section. Does anyone have a formal report that they would like to share tonight?
The Transportation Committee met Thursday afternoon. Obviously, there's a lot going on with construction and traffic, but overall, the centralized pickup locations have been extremely beneficial. And I think there will be ongoing discussions and locations to be planned out moving forward. The construction with the new parking lot, extremely excited with more parking for the students, staff, and activities for those coming. We just ask that you look at the directions with the traffic flow that's coming. That will be ongoing to teach not only the staff and the students, but also the people that are coming from here on out for the next couple of years. Exciting with the, oh, let's just say, we talked about the annual fee for the busing. Instead of going two times a year, we are, we moved forward and said, we're going to go with the annual fee. So that will be big for the parents to get on board with that. We are talking about a new, or increasing the fees. So that's in discussion, there's nothing that's final there. Other than that, there's a couple of new buses that have been delivered. There's three buses that are on the way, on their way, excuse me, a couple of new Suburbans. So with the on-growing community, we are increasing the transportation as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have one tonight?
Just real quick, ASVSD Fall Conference or Annual Conference has opened up for registration, so it'll be August fourth and fifth here at the Sheridan. So board members, staff, it's a great opportunity for ongoing education, and so want to get registered for board members, contact Jennifer for registration.
Thank you. Alternative Ed, TeachWell just continues to blossom, and so we're doing good work there. And the K through six, I think, expansion that we did this past year was very well-received. We have a lot more students, so thank you for all the support. And for those of you who don't know what TeachWell is, TeachWell, it, we, TeachWell, we operate under East Dakota Educational Co-op, so it's a co-op, and it's, the member districts are West Central and Hartford, Brandon Valley, and Lenox, so. But the, so it is those districts that serve on the board, but services are open to any districts that, that need or have a need, so. Anyone else? No, everyone's quiet. All right, couple travel, a travel report there for you to review. Otherwise, that takes us to the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, see you Sunday.